And I think I'm going to get better with public speaking just by being there. I'm going to try and apply next year because I think the more I'm in this class, the better I get. We also go on tours at colleges. A few weeks ago, we went to Fifers. It was really fun. And this class helped me actually ask questions to people I don't know. I also think Avid is going to help me with my careers. I want to be a teacher, a dancer, and a dance coach. I think it's going to help me because when I dance, I won't be so nervous in front of a crowd, and it will help me teach better when I'm a teacher. I hope you enjoyed reading about what Avid has done for me. And I'm going to close with this. Thus far, we have learned at college visits like Fifers, a day in the park with Special Olympics. And the next week, like Tate said, we will be traveling to UNCC. And the next week, we will be going to Millenport, reading to first graders and kindergarteners. However, the meat and potatoes of our focus, day in and day out in our 45-minute elective class, where they learn through every activity relational capacity, the power to speak up for themselves and to get along with others, what a desperately needed skill for every age and culture in our world today. Thank you all very much for allowing this investment into the people in our community. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Krib. And if you can stay there with your students, I know that we have two people on our board that are real proponents of the Avid program because they went this summer to some training as well. I thought maybe they might want to share a quick word with you. Ms. Whitaker?
I did have the opportunity to go to the conference this summer with Mr. Krib. I really didn't know a whole lot about Avid. We had gone to North Stanley Middle, I believe, and had visited the class there. And that was the first time I'd ever stepped into an Avid class or ever even knew what Avid was. But I was so impressed with the students. And like you said, they were able to ask us questions. They spoke. They were very clear. Just when I left out of there, I just had a, you know, it was just awesome at what we were able to experience in that classroom. So when I had the opportunity to go to the conference this summer, you know, it was a really good experience and gave us an opportunity to be able to really see what Avid is and what that could do for our county, and more importantly, what that can do for our students. So thank you guys for coming. It was awesome to be able to listen to you speak.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker and Ms. Poplin.
I will agree with everything Ms. Whitaker has said so far, but I think Riley might have summed it up best when she said, "It's not just a class, it's a community." And that is kind of what I took away from Tampa, I think, from the conference more than anything. It's building that rapport in your classroom and with your students in your school. And it sounds like Mr. Krib is doing that in his classroom. So congratulations, Mr. Krib. It sounds like you're applying those skills very well, and it sounds like your students are relaying those. But I just want to say that the program is amazing, the way that they break down note-taking and critical thinking and apply that in a creative way that students enjoy it and want to participate in the class. I just appreciate everything you're doing. So thank you. Thank you guys for speaking.
We are very proud of you. Mr. Krib, is there a way that, I think if we stand right here, we might can shake their hand? Would they like come around this way and let us do that? Thank all of you that were here and for your presentations and your recognitions. We appreciate all of you. Thanks a lot for students to stand up and speak, I'm sure, before board. Mr. Krib, but I know you're proud of them. We're proud of them, too. At this time, I would like to ask for motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1; Attorney Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3; and School Safety Plans, North Carolina General Statute 115C-105.27. May I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I think a motion we enter into closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The board is now in closed session. Time, I would like to call the board back into open session. Once again, welcome to those of you in attendance, to those of you joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. Board docs provides a three-minute timer, so I will let you know when your three minutes is up. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. We have one person signed up tonight, Ms. Donna Miller. If you can come on up, please. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name's Donna Miller, and I had, I've got a long list of things that I wanted to say, but God told me just to speak from my mind and my heart. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to refer back to some of my notes, but I'm going to speak from my heart. So one of the things that I want to kind of set the stage for what I'm here for today. Back in the late '70s, when I was in middle school, the middle school and the high school were side by side, and the bus parking lot was in between. And I remember, you know, as a middle schooler, on a day that there was a young man that was stabbed and killed, young black man, that was stabbed and killed simply because of the color of his skin. There was no other reason. You know, back in those days was the days, you know, where you saw the Klan sometimes, and, you know, there was a lot of racial tension and so forth. Moving forward, you know, I thought most of that was gone. And I raised, you know, I've got five children. Four of my five children went through Stanley County School Systems, graduated from Stanley County School Systems. You know, one went into the military, one's a law enforcement officer here in county, and, you know, one has a small business, and the other one is a mom, you know, working to support her children. And so, you know, I raised them to see, not to see color, not to see color, to look at people for the character of who they were. Four of my grandchildren, I have fourteen and one on the way, four of my grandchildren are considered mixed. Three are mixed African-American, and one is Egyptian mixed. Something happened on October 20th. There was things that led up to that day that changed my perception forever. I believed that it was gone, but I'm here to tell you tonight that racism is alive and well in this county, in this school system, by teachers, by staff, is here. We have experienced the most horrible experience trying to get this taken care of with the school system, with the teachers, you know, just trying to address it, trying to take care of it. It's been a horrible experience. You know, I used to be the one that was a proponent for, you know, for the school systems. You know, I stood up for the public school systems when all the homeschool stuff started. I can't do that right now. I can't. You know, my grandson, who is of mixed race, has been bullied, has been taunted, has been physically assaulted, and had racial slurs by a teacher made to him.
Ms. Miller, I know the three-minute time is up. Okay? I appreciate what you have had to say in speaking from your heart. The three minutes is up. I do believe that more conversation, I believe, will be had later.
Can I just say one more thing?
Your time's up. Your time's up.
I just want to say one thing. Not one single person from the school system, from the school, nobody has offered to apologize to my grandson, not one, to apologize to him for the hurt that he feels every day. And he's now homeschooled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. You will notice, and you have had time to look at this as well, we have three things that fall under our consent agenda. So we have the approval of the October 3 regular meeting, the October 30 2023 work session meeting, the November 1 2023 special called meeting. We also have our school improvement safety plans of 2023-24, and we have 2023-2024 candidates for early graduation. We have grouped this together. You've had a chance to look over it. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next are committee reports. First, we have facilities. Ms. Carla Poplin.
Thank you. I just have a few things to kind of go over tonight. The Indy Project is moving along. We're anxiously awaiting that to get started. And then today, our board was able to tour Montgomery Central along with some city council members and a few county commissioners and take a look at that facility, ask some questions. And I think that was a great visit. We really enjoyed their hospitality and got to ask a lot of things that we were wondering about. So that was wonderful. And then the last thing I have is, we haven't had a facilities meeting since the last meeting, but we do have a joint commissioner-facilities-finance meeting tomorrow. That's all I have. Thank you.
That's going to be the, like, the small groups that's been meeting. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Dustin Lisk.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on October 30 for a finance committee meeting and had quite a few topics to get through. We had a work session following. So much of what we discussed will be deferred to budget season. The first item was coaches and athletic director pay. The biggest discrepancy is in athletic director pay. We're pretty far off from the surrounding counties, so that's going to need to be addressed. The second was second-grade swim lessons. This was something I was made aware of, provided by the school system to the YMCA. I think this was previously a family or entity outside the school system that garnered the money through donations to pay for that. That's about $16,000. So that will have to be decided upon as we approach budget season as well. The third topic was mowing and landscaping. That's been an ongoing conversation about how we're going to fund more of that. I think Mr. Keith Benton's doing a great job. But the analysis was to, should we outsource in certain areas or should we do more internal via hiring and equipment? Of course, all that requires money, and again, that will be deferred to budget season. Probably, and then, of course, we reviewed, we had a parent speak on band fees and how that is the cost to participate in that sport relative to other activities in the school system. But the two biggest items, the first being the ESS contract review, we had kicked that back to the finance committee meeting. We had ran the amendment by the law firm representing the school system on the non-solicent part of the agreement. And I think that they were comfortable, the committee was comfortable, the board is comfortable with the amendment to carry us through the end of the school year. And then again, as we approach fiscal year-end, the board can decide how they want to proceed. But that's a one-page amendment. The five-year initial contract is over. And then probably the largest item that's going to take some serious discussion is the classified pay scale. If you remember from the prior meetings, the Department of Public Instruction of the state is adopting the Office of State Personnel pay scale, and we've been given one more fiscal year to adopt that. For simplicity purposes, that's about another $1.2 million in recurring funds we'll need from the county to support that pay scale. But that takes someone, I looked at it, for example, a classified making $2,600 a month would go, I think, maybe a 25% increase in pay on that pay scale. So it's pretty substantial. So someone's not here for 10 or 20 years and not getting a raise. But we will have to adopt that. That was it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I need to clarify something. So we have one year, you said, one year or two?
We're in that year.
So we're in the year.
We have to request that.
Okay.
And, you know, if you remember, we've requested in the last two budget cycles for the funds to correct this pay scale. And if anyone is a classified employee, you kind of understand you can work 10 to 20 years and not get a raise inside of that. So that will change. But the commissioners gave us $1 million, I think roughly overall, and this is about $1.2 just for that. That doesn't include the new budget coming down from the state that increased certified pay, which of course increases the retirement and insurance that the county has to fund.
Thank you. Thanks for your explanation of that. Okay, so we, I need a motion to approve the ESS amended contract as presented. Is that the what, is that what way I need to word that?
Yeah, I'll move to go ahead and approve the one-page contract as amended.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Poplin. Any discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, that ESS amended contract has been approved. Thank you for your work with that, Mr. Lisk. Next, we have marketing and engagement. Ms. Watson.
No report.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Whitaker.
No report.
Wow. Wasn't just me that said that. Thank you. Let's see. Instructional, I'm sorry, Mr. Sorenson.
All that trouble for no report.
I'm sorry that I skipped that. Okay. Safety and security, Dr. Levler.
We had a meeting in the last month. Ms. Flo was there to give us the details. We were just going over what kind of drills, what kind of, how's our system going as far as safety and security? She said that every month, we have a fire drill, and it's not just the fire department that comes. We have the state patrol and some other law enforcement, they're also participating. So it's good that everybody's cooperating on that. And then we have an intercom system. Some of our systems are kind of worn out in our schools, and we're replacing them. Where if a teacher's in there or aides in there, they can hit a button, and then somebody in the central office will respond. So we're getting this work done in our schools. Then as far as our SROs, as of now, we've got all of our SOR, SROs covered, except we have one that's not covered, but we have people that are off-duty from the other jobs that are covering that. So we've got that covered, and hopefully, we'll get another one hired. Also, we've got our cameras in our schools. They cover most of the areas, but every year, we have our safety people and the principals and administration of the schools go through the vulnerability assessment. And we do need some more cameras in our schools, and Ms. Flo is working on some grants to try to get that covered so that we get more cameras. So also, we have radios or walkie-talkies in our schools, and that's, our materials are kind of old, so we're trying to get those replaced because the batteries go down and they don't work as well. So she's also working on a grant to get that covered. But it was a very informative meeting, and Ms. Flo and her group are doing a good job, but it was good to have a meeting and see that our safety and security is trying to do a good job for our system.
Thank you, Dr. Levler. Next, we have on the agenda, it's the 2024-2025 draft calendar options. We have an early start calendar option, which all of you have been able to look at. We have that draft of a traditional start calendar. Again, all of you've had a chance to look at this. What is the pleasure of the board for the 2024-2025 calendar?
I move that the board accept the early start calendar for the 2024-2025 school year.
A motion has been made by Ms. Poplin that we adopt the early start 2024-2025 calendar. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion?
I would just add that after having the early start calendar this year, I have lots of staff and parents saying that they're very pleased with the way it's going.
And I would like to say a big thank you also to the calendar committee, Dr. Dennis, everyone that was involved with that for working on this and giving us those two options. Okay, we've had a second. We've had a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Then on this date, the 2024-2025 early start calendar has been adopted. Next is superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few dates to be cognizant of. The week of November 6 through 10 is School Psychology Week. Today, of course, was Election Day in some of our areas. November 11, very near and dear to me, is Veterans Day. Wish all our veterans a great day and hope they take advantage of some of the opportunities they have to celebrate Veterans Day. November 23, of course, is Thanksgiving, also youngest daughter's birthday, and the 24 is American Heritage Day. So as far as sports goes, we've had several of our sports teams throughout the district make, and individuals for that matter, make state playoffs. But just one thing that was noteworthy was all four of our high schools made the state playoffs. And we do have two that are moving through. So you can watch Albemarle and North Stanley compete next week in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Playoffs. Next week, myself and some school board members will be at the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference. I do want to, we had a job fair today, some turnout, you know, of some individuals that were interested in some different positions, and glad to have that. We had some, several people interested. And I want to go, these kind of go hand in hand. I went to an opportunity with Special Olympics at YMCA Park the other day, and they had, you know, their field day, and it was really nice getting to see all the kids having a good time. And it was also really nice getting to see some of our kids and how they intermingle with their peers. We had the Avid students from our middle schools and high school that were over and helping to facilitate the event, and they did an outstanding job, and the whole event was great. And I want to thank the staff, all the staff to help put it together, especially our EC staff. It was a really good opportunity to come out and have some fun. And last but not least, my eldest Amelia, Dennis, it's her birthday today. She'll be 14 years old, or is 14. I hope she's watching this, and I hope she's thoroughly embarrassed. Thank you, and y'all have a good day.
Well, happy birthday to Amelia. And Dr. Dennis, our two high school teams, they play this Friday?
That's correct.
Okay. And Albemarle at home?
Thomasville.
Yeah, Thomasville. Yeah, that's an old rivalry, too.
And then North Stanley?
Is at Brevard.
At Brevard. Okay. Well, we are really, we're really excited and proud of our athletic teams, and we wish them well.
Charles, which one are you going to?
Next on our agenda is board member comments. Ms. Whitaker, I'm going to begin with you.
I knew you would come to this end. I'm a little like Brian Krib, you know. It's, I don't know if it's the weather or what it is. It seems like we all have all this sinus going on, so I will be short. But I just wanted to congratulate the Stanley Stars. I love this program. I'm glad that's something we started doing. I think anytime we can recognize our employees, we need to take the opportunity to do that. And also to Brian Krib and his Avid students, I love hearing. Anytime the students come and speak, I love to hear them, and I'm just excited about that program and what direction we're going in and what we will see come from that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I can take it back to the Thomasville-Albemarle Boardroom rivalry. I participated in that. So it was very fun, and we won most of the time. I want to thank the commissioners and Albemarle City Council members who attended with the board today to visit Montgomery Central High School. It's good for other government entities to see what we're looking at and what we're trying to do and the opportunities that were offered for those students. I think that'll carry well into our facilities conversations tomorrow with the commissioners. And I'm just going to leave it with a few things for folks to think about. I am a statistic nut, so I just decided this morning to look through the 10 years of the county financials, and I noticed that our revenue's gone up about 50% over the last 10 years. Our sales tax revenue's gone up about 160%. Our growth rate, meaning of the tax base, has gone up roughly 40%. And so when I go back and I look at something like Montgomery County and their latest is in 2020, we have about twice the revenue that they do. So we're very feasible. We're in a good fiscal situation as a county for the things and the school and the facility renovations that we're looking at. Thank you. for the things and the school and the facility renovations that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all of us enjoyed that visit today to Ms. Poplin.
I just also want to start out thanking Tate, Riley, Leila, Maya, and Cardi, and I hope I got those all right, for speaking tonight. It takes a lot to get up to that podium, even as adult to speak. It's kind of intimidating, even if there's not a huge crowd in here. And when they spoke, there were a lot of folks in here at that point in time. But the curriculum that is in that Avid program is something we don't have anywhere else in our schools. And seeing that we're working here after being able to go to the conference and see the training and see how that's implemented, it kind of just makes your heart a little happy to see kids getting up here saying that they enjoy that class. They feel like that class is a community. They feel like, you know, that class is helping them become better people. That's what we want for our students. We want them to be supported and feel like they're growing. So just, yes, to North Stanley and Mr. Cribb for their presentation tonight. I also want to congratulate the Stanley Stars. I love that we're able to recognize our staff at least once a month. I'd love to do it a lot more. But we just don't really have resources to, you know, come in here once a week and bring staff in. But I wish we could. Also, thank you to city council and the county commissioners for joining us today. I think a lot of good conversation was had around the needs of the county. And just excited to see where that goes into the meeting tomorrow also. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Leffler.
Thank you. Nobody's mentioned the junior ROTC, and I think that's a great program. I went out to West Stanley and you would say, oh, these kids hate that. They'd love it. They just, their director out there, their teacher, they really respect him. And it would be great if we could have it in some of our other high schools because it's a wonderful program. And then in the Stanley Stars, like I always say, we've got the teachers, we've got administration. But without the Stanley Stars, those individuals, our schools don't work. They don't operate. We've got to have everybody operate. So it's great we're doing that. And then the avid presentation, to see these kids get up and speak. I don't think I ever got up to speak like that, maybe in a speech class in college. So it's great that they're getting this experience. It makes them have the confidence to go out and deal with people and adults and stuff. I think it's great. And hopefully we'll be able to get it to spread to some of our other classes and schools in our district. And that's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Leffler. Ms. Watson.
Well, I only did tell everything everyone's saying. But I'm really proud of that Avid class. I'm telling you, those kids are awesome. I'm like him. You don't ever remember getting up and talking in front of people. And here they are doing it. So it's great, really great. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Sorensen.
I'll bet after closed session, y'all are saying, oh, here it comes. Actually, we're going in tonight on some positive things. Start out wishing all the veterans that worked for Stanley County Schools, and there's quite a few, including this fellow over here, Happy Veterans Day. And I respect what you did and appreciate the things you've done. Talking about Avid and JROTC. Yeah, actually, I'm going to turn that back over to you. That's okay. Avid and JROTC. We did the Skills USA thing for 28 years at South. And one of the leadership events is public speaking. Those four kids today blew me away. Those kids were confident. They articulated, they spoke, they had good eye contact. That is head and shoulders above your average kid. That's preparing future leaders. I did actually travel out to the JROTC crowd at West about two weeks ago and board them with some submarine stories because those kids want to fly. I was super impressed by the discipline, the structure, and the commitment to the program that the kids have. But you ask them to lead, they'll stand up and lead. So they, Dr. Dennis is going to talk about the veterans breakfast here in a minute. They did a little thing there at West Stanley yesterday that was pretty cool. Thanksgiving's in a couple, three weeks. Won't get to talk to anybody before that. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'm going to close by saying, I almost wouldn't be sitting here tonight. I went to the North Stanley-Albemarle High School football game. Mercy. You talk about two squads of dedicated, committed, hard-working, almost insane athletes going at it for four full quarters, about had a heart attack. It was just an amazing game. If y'all haven't been out to see one of the high school teams play, those two making the playoffs, make the trip and go support them. They fantastic programs. Literally, I mean, I had to leave. My heart started palpitating because it was such an exciting game. A lot of great things going on in Stanley County schools. Academics, athletics, clubs and stuff. We've got to bear down now. COVID's behind us. I know it's still endemic type thing, but it's behind us. It's time to bear down and start savoring some of the things these kids are doing. The Avid Program, JROTC, our Honor Society. Dr. Dennis is going to talk about the Veterans Breakfast opportunities. They're doing things like that. I'm just excited to be part of Stanley County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, the National Technical Honor Society has put together a Veterans Breakfast across our district at the four high schools. Mr. Sorensen and I, we had the distinct honor of being able to attend one at West Stanley, which was Tuesday, which was great. The other three, two are at South Stanley and North Stanley this Thursday at nine o'clock. And Albemarle has one Thursday also at 9:45. Regrettably, cannot make it because I have a board of directors meeting in Charlotte for our region. But for any of you watching this feed, veterans or supporters of veterans that would like to come out, that's the date and the times which they will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. And I can echo what everyone has said. I did really enjoy the JROTC unit from West Stanley opening up for us tonight. It's greatly appreciated. For our county office staff that's here, thank you, as always, that you are here for our meetings. You do not go unnoticed. And our principals that are back there, I know that you're very proud of your schools. And I certainly am proud of all of you. So I know, again, I just, with Thanksgiving coming up, it seems like, wow, the holidays are getting here in a hurry. But I do want to say a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Next on the agenda will be the date and time of our next board meeting, which will be Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 6:15 PM in the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room. And now I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Carter, for Personnel, Administration, Student Services.
Madam Chair, board members, if I may turn your attention to the personnel agenda. Section one is your information, but section two does require your action. And I would like to note, we are bringing several employees back to Stanley County. I would like to call your attention to that as well. But I would like to request your approval of section two.
I first want to say I'm glad that our employees that may have left us are coming back. So thank you, Dr. Carter, for all that you're doing and others in our county office. So may I have a motion, board members, to approve section two of the personnel agenda as presented?
Make a motion. We approve section two of the personnel agenda as presented.
A motion by Ms. Poplin. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Section two has been approved. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Watson, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. We are adjourned.